City of Apache Junction Council Meeting. Order. Invitation will be led by Vice Mayor Wilson. And then after that, due to a little bit of delay, we're going to just let Councilmember Schroeder do the pledge by himself. If everyone wants to say it quietly under their breath, it would be a little more organized.
We can't hear him.
Ready for the invitation?
Um, Matt?
Mr. Mayor, can we make sure your microphone is on?
Yeah.
All right.
Okay.
Thank you.
We're ready, Chip.
Oh, okay. Couldn't hear you. Heavenly Father, we ask for your continuing oversight and assistance as we, as a community and as a nation, work through these very tough times. We ask for your compassion and civil order as we get along with family members, neighbors, and fellow citizens. We know we must work together to keep our loved ones safe and healthy as we continue to work for the overall good for our community. We also want to express our support to the families and friends of our community's citizens that have been affected by this virus. Above all, express our condolences to family and friends, to everyone that has passed because of this terrible virus. We ask for your hand of help for our entire community and a speedy recovery to everyone that is ill. We all are very desirable to return to normal and are very hopeful that with your assistance, it will be doing that very soon. We also ask for your protective hand to include their health for all our first responders, not only keep them safe, but bring them home healthy each and every day. In the Lord's name, amen.
Due to a bit of a delay in the system, Councilmember Schroeder will say the pledge. And if everyone wants to say it under their breath, it'll be a little more organized.
Okay.
A pledge of allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic from which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice as our own.
Roll call.
Mayor Sertie?
Here.
Vice Mayor Wilson?
Here.
Councilmember Barker?
Here.
Councilmember Evans?
Here.
Councilmember Rizzi?
Present.
Councilmember Schroeder?
Here.
Councilmember Struble?
Here.
You have a quorum, Your Honor?
Sometimes we would warn everybody to quiet your phones, but that's not a good idea in a meeting like this. And also, Councilmember Schroeder came in today because there's a presentation later that he wants to be a part of, so that is why he is here in person. Otherwise, for yous watching at home, where this is kind of a virtual meeting to try to encourage everyone to just stay separated. Do we have a motion on the consent agenda?
Your Honor?
Yes.
I must the agenda be accepted as presented and the minutes of the regular meeting of April 7th, 2020 be approved. That Resolution Number 20-16, an intergovernmental agreement with Maricopa Association of Governments for roadway safety program grant funds for channelizing right turn safety improvements for the junction streets at Tomahawk Road be approved. That Resolution Number 20-17, an intergovernmental agreement with Maricopa Association of Governments for roadway safety program grant funds for safety improvements to 18 traffic signal facilities be approved. And that Resolution Number 20-19, appointing Finance Director Donna Minner as the city's applicant agent for requesting state and federal disaster recovery assistance related to the COVID-19 pandemic be approved. Second?
I heard Chip do a second. Roll call.
I have a motion by Councilmember Barker and a second by Vice Mayor Chip Wilson. Councilmember Evans?
Yes.
Councilmember Rizzi?
Yes.
Councilmember Struble?
Yes.
Vice Mayor Wilson?
Yes.
Councilmember Barker?
Yes.
Councilmember Schroeder?
Yes.
Mayor Sertie?
Yes.
Unanimous, Your Honor?
We have no awards or presentations. Any announcements or current events will go down the line. Councilmember Struble?
Yeah, I got a couple of things. First of all, it's past April 1st when the census was supposed to be done, but because of everything, it has been extended out. And I just want to remind of all our citizens, if you haven't already done the survey, it's probably available online still. I know I did mine late on April 3rd, but it still counts. And last time Al let us know Apache Junction was actually ahead of the rest of Pinell County as far as responses. So again, this is very important to our community because we get state and federal funding based on our population. So it's very important that anybody out there that hasn't already participated in the census in Apache Junction to go out and do it today or tomorrow as soon as possible. The second thing I've got is on Easter Sunday, we did a, I don't, this really wasn't an event, but it was a time where we made available the showers at the Salvation Army to, for our homeless citizens in the community to come in and get a shower and get cleaned up. We also fed them some hot dogs and stuff. And we followed all the guidelines to make sure that everybody was safe and separated and everything like that. It was well turned out. We had a lot of community members that got involved. Like I said, Captain Darla from Salvation Army opened up her facility for us to do that. We had various churches provide things. We had Genesis provide some food, some hygiene products. We had the community thrift store provide some socks and other clothing items that we could pass out. It was really a good way for the community to come together to help out those that are in need. Because it was so good and because they are still lacking, we're going to be holding another shower event this Sunday at the Salvation Army. It's going to start at 10 o'clock and go until it finishes. This last time it went until about 3 o'clock. So if you, we have flyers out and we are trying to contact as many of the homeless people as we can through the various agencies and such to let them know what's going on. But it's just a great time for our community to come together to help those in need, and it's another great example of how Apache Junction people really do serve each other and help us through these times. Thanks.
Councilmember Evans?
I don't have anything. I've just been being good.
Vice Mayor Wilson?
Don't have anything?
Councilmember Barker?
No, just a big thank you to all those people out there that are giving us service, volunteering, delivering food, et cetera, et cetera. We have a big heart in this community.
Councilmember Schroeder?
No, I don't.
Councilmember Rizzi?
No, I don't have anything. Thank you.
I have a couple. One is kind of on a sad note. Unfortunately, Bryant is one year closer to his retirement today. So if you know what that means.
Yeah. One year older and wiser.
Yes. The National Forest announced today that starting tomorrow, all of their national forests are going to be under fire restrictions. Now, not the real strict ones, but no open flames. If you're going up there, you can only have Coleman stoves and things like that. And their reasoning being, we know it's still moist out there, but they don't want to have to respond to anything because all the first responders are needed here in the populated areas. So that's their reasoning on that. Some kind of big news from the federal government helping out Mesa Gateway Airport. They received a huge grant, I believe it was $20 million.
$20 million.
And since the city sits on the board that helps to, you know, direct how that airport is run, I asked what would happen with it. And they're actually, they're going to just sit on it and just pay employees because right now, every airport is really struggling. This may be what keeps them afloat for the next several years because we don't know how long until the travel industry comes back. So they are going to be very frugal with it. They've assured us of that. Also want to reiterate on everybody that we want to continue to have everybody use our restaurants for carryout, and they're even delivering alcohol if you want to get a drink with your steak or whatever. And it's been a little bit of miscommunication on how much they can do, and I would hope that we'd come out and support them and, you know, keep them afloat as well. And so, all right, with that, we'll go to the city manager's report.
Thank you, Your Honor. Bryant Powell, city manager. Yes, I am another year older, so appreciate that. I have a couple of reports for the mayor and council and community. One of the questions everyone is asking is how are things going in the city during this time? Recently, I asked Larry Kirch, our Development Services Director, provide a report on development, both existing and future development. We have currently all projects moving forward. Dan Kaufman's Superstition Vista 240 lot, single-family subdivision, home subdivision south of baseline on Cortez continues to move forward. Lennar's project, you may know that one, that's one that's been approved, is off Goldfield and Old West Highway near the freeway, is still moving forward. Recently, Phil Alberto's on the northwest corner of Idaho and Apache Trail has began their demolition. And assuming all goes well in terms of the owner and the contractor, that will be a project that we should see for sure by fall of 2020. Dutch Brothers is moving forward to completion, and we're very excited to have a new Vietnamese restaurant as well come to the community where Scuttlebutt used to be. Other restaurants of interest, we have a change of where Dino's is at, and they're moving to a new location closer to the downtown in the focal point. And Tres Banderas, which is on East Broadway, east of Royal Palm, also has some interest. So it's great to see the interest in the commercial area. As well, we've seen some new, the continuation of single lot home constructions around the city continue, as well as lots of permit activity for electrical and plumbing permits. Just wanted to share that that continues as well as we've had any time here at the city, and we're glad to see that continue. I also want to share with the community, the program closed the loop with some really outstanding neighbors that helped other neighbors during the transition of the residential trash change. And this group of individuals deserve a huge thank you as they volunteered their time to pick up and deliver rad bins for their fellow residents so they did not have to pay the fee. These volunteers were so helpful and would consistently ask Jill if there were any more residents they could help. On average, each helped about 10 residents. We wish we can give them so much more, but we did give them a State 48 AJ shirt and an AJ hat. So we'd like to recognize at this time, Tim Bowden, Ken Coburn, Kent Moore, Councilmember Struble, and Vice Mayor Wilson. Thank you all for that, and we appreciate neighbors helping neighbors, as has been mentioned already tonight. And then Matt, could you put up the one slide that's our front page of our website? Many residents want to know at any point, they could know what's going on with COVID-19 or the coronavirus. You'll see at the very top of our front page of the website, it's always there. And we also have the link on the top middle for the date and the updates for the day. We anticipate changes to continue through this next period of time, and you can sign up for those updates. Your Honor, that concludes my report tonight.
Okay. Consideration of application for an owner transfer individual Series 6 liquor license for Superstition Skies Bar and Restaurant. Jennifer?
Thank you, Your Honor. Before council this evening is an owner transfer for the Series 6 liquor license held by Superstition Skies Bar. Staff, in your council packet, you have staff reports from the Fire Department, the Police Department, Building and Safety Division, and the Zoning Department. There are recommendations that if council recommends approval to the liquor board, that there will be conditions on the application. It relates back to a fence that was initially proposed back in 2007 with the initial liquor license for a slump block wall with wrought iron railing on the top half of that. Again, the application in 2009 referenced that wall around the patio area that was an extension of premises applied for back in 2007. That has not been constructed, per the applicants saying that they would build the wall. Also, there has been complaints from neighbors regarding the music that is being played outside the area. I know that Rudy had provided some comments. I don't see him here. There he is. If you'd like to ask him questions about the application, he is here tonight, and the applicant is present to answer questions council may have. At this time, we have not received any written or phone calls of complaints against the establishment.
Are there any questions from the council members?
I have a lot of questions.
Okay. Gail?
Is Rudy, Rudy, are you going to give a brief presentation on the timeline?
He's stepping up to the mic right now.
Okay.
Good evening, Councilwoman Evans, members of the council. We included a couple of exhibits in our comment in relation to the liquor license. And the reason we brought that up is because, as council knows, we have had continuing complaints over the years about particularly the east patio outside drinking area causing noise and other issues against the residential, single-family residential properties to the east and to the south. When we researched this particular item, we went back and found that at one time, the proprietor, who I believe is also Ms. Nugent, currently the liquor license applicant, had offered to put up a wall. We noticed that the wall was never put up. There's also a question about the site plan that was included with the application. We believe it depicts specifically which areas are being requested for the extension of premises, that being the patio in the northeast corner of the building, and then a smaller patio area on the east side of the building. So our recommendation, and it's a recommendation only, is maybe to try and readdress the issue of the wall, to try and mitigate impacts to surrounding residential properties. Are there more questions, Gail?
This is the problem I have with this. This property's been sold several times since this 2007. Nugent owned it in 2007 when part of the condition for the extension of premises, they agreed to do this block wall, and they ignored it. It went back to the original owner, it was sold again, and now it's back to Nugent. But on the application itself, I have to get back to that. They're calling themselves the owner, and they're not the owner until January of 2021. They have a lease purchase agreement, and so for the remainder of 2020, they are simply the tenant. Now, on page two of the application, they say they're the purchaser, which they are, but they're not purchasing it until next year. They're a tenant. Number 18 is asked, what is the total money borrowed for the business, not including this lease? And they said zero, and that's not so. They borrowed $545,000 from Sotomayor, who is the current owner. So the application hasn't been filled out correctly. The same person that ignored what they agreed to do before is the new tenant who is buying it as is, whereas he is responsible for everything maintenance-wise on the building and cannot do anything structurally until it is paid for 20 years from 2021. I don't, I think this needs to be continued to give him time to build the wall he agreed to back in 2007, and he owned it until 2016. So he can build a wall and come into compliance, and he needs to change his application to read correctly. He is not the, they are not the owner. I'm sorry I keep saying he and it's a she. I apologize. I don't, as we're getting bigger and bigger, I don't know why we don't enforce what we have in place to protect everybody's surrounding property values. And I don't think we should move forward with this until the wall is corrected as required by Development Services and the Building Department. Because if we went ahead and approved this the way it is, saying that we approve it with a condition, when Councilmember Struble and I went to the Liquor Control Board with Joel on another matter, they don't care if the city puts a condition on it. If it says approved, it's approved, and we get a nose to the thumb to us again. So I don't want to approve any part of this until the wall is done and they correct the application.
Are you finished, Gail? All right, if you were here, this would be one that would be much easier to do if we were all here in person because I think there will be...
Yes, it certainly would. And I hope I explained it thoroughly.
It was kind of hard to follow the owner in 2007 and back and forth. Now, those are P and Z issues, those are not liquor issues. And if these folks do have that big of a, I'm just going to be the advocate for them here, if they do have that big of a loan, they're going to need to be up and running to pay that thing back, especially in this terrible economy. So it sounds like they need this to make improvements. A lot of businesses, unless they're making extra money, they can't do this type of thing. So...
In the agreement that they have, when they're leasing the property, it's like $3,000 a month, $2,000 a month, and then there's no lease amount due for July, August, and September. Those are three free months. So the...
And you know that, you know that that's in this contract?
Yes.
Yes.
Okay.
It's what I read.
Page three.
Yep.
Okay, Joel or Bryant. So the person applying for the liquor license, are they the owner of the property? A lot of people, a lot of tenants don't feel that they should fix up other people's property if they're the owner, and that makes a difference. So can you explain that so that everybody's on the same page?
Well, it's usually between the two parties. They get to agree on who does what, and that's usually included in the price of the asset, the building. So that's, it's really between the two of them.
I know it is. That's not what I asked. So I asked, so the person applying for the license does not own the building?
Correct.
I believe that is correct, yes. Based on what is in the documents.
So if I'm an applicant, I'm not going to fix someone else's property up, and that way, if I fail, then I've fixed their property for nothing.
But, Your Honor, that's the time.
Okay, let's, I think Robin is trying to get in. Let's let Robin answer.
It seems to me that since this same person, the one who is making the application, is the person who got the extension with the condition that they would, in fact, build the wall, that was 13 years ago, I think they need to make good on that before they move forward. And may I add one thing, just for Jeff, for clarification? The lease agreement is a triple net lease, which simply means the lease, the person that is leasing this is responsible for all of the maintenance and repairs to the building. That's what a triple net lease does.
Okay. Anyone else?
Your Honor?
Yes. Krista?
So as I look through, reading through this, I'm looking at the Police Department approved, Superstition Medical and Fire District approved, Building approved, Planning approved, with conditions. And so, the liquor license, to me, I just can't see holding up the liquor license to hold them back. Let's let the Planning and Development Department work with these folks on what they need to get done, and let's be an advocate for the businesses. Right now, more than ever, they need support, and let's let our Planning and Development Department do their job and hold these people to these conditions.
Anyone else?
I just have a comment to that. Was that you, Robin? That was me.
Gail, go ahead.
Well, and I'm all for being an advocate for a business, but you have to be an advocate for what they agreed to do. And they put up a chain link fence, knowing that that's not what they agreed to do. So how often do you want to get slapped in the face? So how often do you want to get slapped in the face and can't stand up and say, you know, you better do what everybody else has to do? You can't slide by. I mean, there's a reason we have these regulations. And if we don't hold people to the fire, why the hell do we have the regulations?
Well, I, I think that we have staff that are intended to do that job of holding them to these conditions, and we, this staff needs to do that. This is, this is between them and the Development Services, and the liquor license is between, you know, is for the council to look at. So for me, let staff do their job. It's their job, they, they approved it, or they're recommending approval, you know, with their, their attached conditions. So let's let the staff do their job, and I just, I just, I think they've got it handled. I think when I look at all these recommendations for approval, I don't see any for denial. I would think that if it was an issue, and the Planning Department didn't feel that they could handle holding these people accountable, that they would have said, no, our recommendation is going to be denied. So the fact that Planning and Development Services has also recommended approval, I would suggest that we go with the staff recommendations and let these people move forward with their liquor license.
But it's approval with conditions, and staff-
Yes.
-in Development Services didn't understand that the Liquor Control Board doesn't care if we have conditions, and what else do we have to hold them to the fire to do it? Most of the businesses-
That's their job.
Do what is asked of them. Here's somebody that, they're coming back into the same business, that they signed the lease February of 2020, and they still haven't done anything. So they can be open, and they can hire somebody to build the brick wall. It could have been done already. They knew this, and they-
I think, I would say our Development Services Director is very well familiar with liquor licenses, the State Department, and how it operates. I would give him more credit than that, and again-
I disagree.
I think he's smarter than you're giving him credit, and I think, I just, I can't see with all these recommendations for approval, holding someone up on the liquor license. Let them, they can handle it, they know how to do their job.
Yeah, so-
Okay, we've got, let's let Robin in. Robin, you're very quiet compared to everyone else. I don't know if you're on speaker, but Krista, you're, you're really loud, which sounds good, I'm not criticizing, so, just trying to figure out why some people have a better connection than others.
I just have one comment. I don't think anybody on this council is not advocating for a business, but I would also like to advocate for those neighbors around them, because this license will enable them to continue to serve on the east patio, where the noise is, is being, where people are complaining about that noise, and it's driving them nuts. And I think that we have an obligation to think about our residents as well as our businesses. I don't want to see this business in trouble, definitely not. I own a business, I know how this goes. But they did determine 13 years ago that they were going to build a wall. I think they need to build the wall. I would love to give this a continuance for two weeks to May 5th, and have a start, just start it. Let us see the beginning of this, and then I'm more than willing to say, yes, yes, yes.
Okay, we've just been joined by Larry Kirch. Do you want to talk first, Robert?
Yeah, I just have a-
We're going to have Robert go first, and then Larry is here.
So I, I kind of agree with both sides here, I agree with Krista's argument that, yeah, we have the Development Services, Planning and zoning, these are their responsibilities to enforce all this. What concerns me, though, is that I, Gail, did I hear you correctly, is the application that was presented by the applicant contain false information?
Yes.
Incorrect.
So, is that, is that correct? Was that chip?
Yes.
Yeah.
So, so it's incorrect information.
It's incorrect information.
And the applicant is here, and they'll be speaking when we're all done with our questions.
So I guess I would have to address to you, Mr. Mayor, if someone was purchasing a gun and they had incorrect information on their application, would you sell them a gun?
No, there's federal regulations for that.
Okay.
Okay. Do we want to hear from Larry right now, or after the applicant?
Larry.
Larry's coming to the podium.
Good evening, Mayor.
He's wearing a blue shirt and a gold tie.
The Larry Kirch, Director of Development Services. Just maybe just a point of clarification, the Development Services Department, Building and Inspection, has no enforcement authority, there's no permit that we're overseeing. There's no way for us, as a department, to require the fence that Rudy referred to. The liquor license application comes from the state through the Clerk's Office, we comment on it. We, if you put a condition on it, that condition really is meaningless. So just want to clarify that there is no permit, there's no conditional use permit, there's nothing that the city has before it, that our department, where we can require the fence. So I just want to make sure everybody's aware of that, and I think that's what Councilmember Evans is, is saying, is that you can make a positive recommendation to the Liquor Board with a condition that they put up a fence or a wall, but there's no teeth to that in terms of the city itself here. The only mechanism you have right now would be a continuance to see if that is enough to get the person to do the wall that they promised in 2007. So any other questions on that?
The condition was put in by that department, it looks. I mean, the condition, it says with condition, and so-
It's a suggested condition that I don't think the Liquor Board or the City Council can mandate.
So, I guess my-
And there is no permit, there's no required permit from the city to put up a six-foot wall, Joel was just pointing out to me. So there, we do, we don't have any mechanism to require the wall. We are suggesting that they do it.
So my question is, then, why would it be signed off as approval with condition from that department? Why would the department not say, gosh, we're thinking maybe it's better to recommend not approving? Why would the, why would that specific department say, okay, well, we'll approve it, you know, with these conditions? That's, it didn't come from the council, it's, it came from your department.
Okay, Rudy is at the podium.
Mr. Mayor, Councilwoman Rizzi, the staff memo reads, "Staff strongly suggests that council condition any new liquor license approval on the construction of the combination masonry while wrought iron fence," as discussed in, in 2007. It's a, it's a staff suggestion, the only leverage we have to try and get the wall built, and to try and get some of the neighborhood issues mitigated, is this process. That's why we are strongly suggesting that we use this process to get that wall built.
So I guess in the future, then, it might be a better idea to not, when we get our information in our packets, not to say approval, because often, the council goes on the recommendations of staff, because you guys are the eyes and the ears for us, and, and pass along the information as people that are right there in the mix of the situation. I would suggest not, then say, don't, don't approve, don't, don't recommend approval. It's this department that recommended approval with conditions, and so that's what we see. And like I said, generally, we go with staff recommendations. In the future, it might be better if there's an issue like this that you foresee, you might need to put that in the paperwork and say, we're not recommending approval, and here's why, because we have no teeth. We, we wanted these conditions to be met, but we have no teeth to do it. So do you understand where I, what, where I'm coming from on that?
Yes.
Mayor, can I ask a question?
Yes.
Okay, just because this is out there, and people are listening, hopefully, and watching and stuff, what, what, when it says a block fence with wrought iron top, how tall are we talking about the block going to be, and how, what's the length of the wall that we're going to be requesting if this is going to be being built?
It's a four-foot wall, right, Rudy?
The drawing that Ms. Nugent provided back in 2007 called for a three-block, I'm sorry, three feet of stuck, of block wall, three feet of wrought iron, wrought iron on top, so basically a six-foot fence, and it was depicted as enclosing the outside patio area, not around the whole property, but around the so-called smoking patio itself.
So it's a three-foot wall with three-foot wrought iron, that really isn't going to deflect any kind of noise, correct?
I don't see how it could-
The question was, is it going to deflect any noise?
I don't know. That's a good question.
Doesn't sound like it would mitigate any noise.
It's a, once again, referring back to the current site plan, the patio, the east patio area depicted appears to be smaller than the, what they have proposed in the past. Unfortunately, this drawing does not give, give us any dimensions, measurements, but it appears that the patio is well short of the east property line, and well short of the south property line as well.
Your honor, I want to point out that I think a six-foot, excuse me, Councilmember, would be a six-foot wall would be recommended, whether, that's what they proposed in 2007. There's a wash there, so they're going to have to be back a little bit from the wash, but I think the way to enclose it, again, maybe they want to put a decorative wall with the three-foot and the wrought iron to the north that faces north, because there's not residence, that's the parking lot, but on the east side, and wrapping around to the south, should be a six-foot block wall on the east side of the, adjacent to the wash, and then tying it back into the building. That's what I would recommend.
But at this point, we don't have, I mean, that's, that's not what was agreed upon in 2007, is it?
No, sir.
Okay.
But I think that's what makes sense, though.
Like, no, I, that's, I understand. So then, since 2007, which is, you know, 13 years ago, how much, how much more residential development has been out there for the people listening? How much more, how much closer are residential to this property as it was in 2007?
I don't think much has changed, right, Rudy? And I think the only, we have had Mr. Bow Rider come in several times.
Yeah, it's about the same, single-family residential to the east, single-family residential to the south, and single-family residential to the north. And of course, the city also, not too long ago, acquired another parcel to the south, which in the future will have three more residences on it.
Okay, well, we can go on and on here, let's bring the applicant up and, and hear from her, so if we could have your name and address and-
My name is Lee Nugent, I live at 3,500 South Tomahawk Road in Apache Junction. I would like to address the 2007 issue. That three-foot wall with the wrought iron was on the north patio, it surrounds the smoking patio. Nobody has ever said anything about the east patio. It's really not a patio, I don't even want it as a patio. I just spent $35,000 putting in a huge septic system, and I really don't want anybody back there. And it's surrounded by a gully on the east side and the south side, and a lot of trees. And I've left, I left the trees up there, I said, don't trim them, it helps deflect any noise that would come from the bar area. When we were there until 2016, we really didn't use that east side at all, even though it was approved by the city and by the Liquor Board, both were out there and looked at it. They told me to put up a fence, not a block fence, but just, just something to block it off so that people couldn't go any further to the west. And I think we probably used that patio once or twice when we were there before. We gave up the bar in 2016 because my son and my partner was diagnosed with terminal brain cancer, and I stayed home to take care of him. He died a year ago. The bar was offered back to me by Janet Sotomayor, and I thought about it for quite a while, and then decided to do it. On the liquor license, I read it as, did you borrow money to put down on this? No, I didn't. But I'm borrowing, you know, $545,000, I suppose, on a note, a mortgage, I guess you consider that bargain. That isn't how I read it on the applicant, application. And on, I've had other liquor applications, and I answered them the same way, and nobody had an issue with it. But that 2007 was for the smoking patio on the north side, and it was approved, city came out there, three-foot block wall, and then wrought iron, and that's what's there. If you don't want a patio on the east side, that's just fine with me, I don't care, because I won't use it anyway.
But 2007 is when everybody was having to do smoking patios, right?
Correct.
Yeah.
That's when the law went through. We put a patio on there and decided to put a cover on it, and, and put some decorative stuff around the patio to keep it enclosed.
Are there any questions for the applicant?
Your honor?
Yes.
I just wanted to ask, so you described this as a smoking patio?
Yes.
Would there be music out there, would there be food and drinks and dinner plates clinking with silverware, or just, is this just a quiet area?
It's a bar. It's never really quiet. People have drinks out there, yes, they go out there to smoke. It's approved by the Liquor Board to be, you know, you can have drinks out there, some people have food out there, not very often, but it's basically a smoking patio where they can go out and have, take their beer out there and have a drink. The music is inside. I don't know what's been going on this past year, their last three years, because I haven't been there since 2016, but we never allowed the jukebox to be played loud on the patio in deference to the people that live around there. However, I have to remind you that that bar has been there for 50 years. Those houses that are sitting around there, if they did their due diligence, they knew there was a bar there. Bars are, there's traffic, there's noise. We try to keep it down, we keep the noise inside, we have bans, but, you know, as far as there being a lot of noise out on the patio, there, there just isn't. I mean, people are talking, they're laughing, yes.
I think either-
Can I ask you a question?
Robin, go ahead.
That was Gail.
Gail, go ahead.
But you said you really didn't want the east patio?
I did say that.
So because it's on the diagram that you submitted, would you be willing to take that off of the diagram?
Yes, I would. Like I said, I invested a lot of money in a septic system, there's, there's six big man covers out there. It really isn't conducive to a patio, anyway.
And I can appreciate that you're a new owner, but the problems that we've had in the past, we do not want repeated.
Problems like what?
And that wasn't you. That was a current, one of the past current owners. So I don't know what has to be done to correct the diagram to take that off of there? Can, I don't know, Jennifer can, or who can say how this can be corrected?
Mr. Mayor?
I can submit a drawing to the Liquor Board and just tell them that I want it taken off. I can assure you, I'm not going to use it. There's no way I'm going to use it. We have a smoking patio, it's sufficient.
On the north side?
On the north side. And I have only been open for two days. You know, I, I was open for three days when, when I first bought it, then I had to wait two weeks for the Liquor Board to get my interim license, so I was closed. I was open for two and a half days, and the COVID-19 shut me- I was open for two and a half days, and the COVID-19 shut me down, so we've been closed.
I'm sorry.
I've been trying to do, take care of, there's a lot of things that are in disrepair that have happened over the last three or four years. I've, I've been trying to use what money I have left to go in and fix things up and making improvements. And I run a pretty tight ship, so I don't put up with a lot of stuff from, and most of my customers know that. And I know most of the people that come into that bar. They've been my customers since 2005. I don't have any trouble with guys, I'm the bouncer, you know? I'm four foot nothing. They're not going to give, you know, I'm no challenge to them. They call me mom, you know? So I don't have a problem. And I don't, I'm very aware of noise.
You say it's been there for 50 years, so didn't Elvis and the movie stars used to go there back in the day?
That's what they tell me.
Yeah.
I'm not going to swear to that, because I wasn't there.
All right.
I'm old enough to have been there, but I wasn't there.
All right, Joel has been trying to get the floor. Let's hear from Joel.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I just want to ask the applicant one question.
Sure.
So you're willing to submit a new map, is that correct, with taking off the east patio?
Oh, sure.
And you would do that by a certain date if the council agreed to approve it with that condition, that you would send, that you would submit it, like, maybe tomorrow, and then it could be sent off to the liquor board as an amended site plan?
Yeah, I'm not sure if it's the city I have to tell, or it's the liquor board. I don't think they really care.
They probably don't care. Well, I think it would have to go with the application that Jennifer would be sending off. You can jump in if you want.
Well, I'm saying that since she applied with the liquor board, she would need to send an amended site plan to the liquor board with a note saying that you are amending your site plan. They would then forward to me the amended site plan.
So that would be in the motion, then? If it was for approval?
So we could vote and approve it and then have that done later?
Yes.
Yeah, but then make that in the motion.
I don't want that patio, anyway. I don't want it, so...
And that solves a lot of problems all the way around. So Joel, what about on the application where it says purchaser, because she's currently a tenant? Does that have to be corrected?
Why don't you ask her the question?
Okay.
What is her status?
No. Everything's gone through closing already. It's just been delayed. The payment has been delayed, that's all. The mortgage payment is going to start in January, but we've already closed escrow.
You've closed escrow, but you have a lease until December of 20... Your actual purchase doesn't take place until 2021, is what your paperwork said.
Right, January, January 1st, 2021 is when, but it, I believe everything's been recorded, and...
The papers we got was not recorded. It's just an agreement.
They were waiting for Janet's attorney to get out of the hospital. He had not the flu, but something similar to the flu, and he was in there for 10 days, actually during the time that we were doing the closing, and he needed some paper, they needed some paperwork from him.
Well, nothing on your agreement that was submitted has been recorded as of today. There's nothing there. It's just a lease and an agreement to purchase in 2021. So that's my technical question, is she's actually a tenant, not a purchaser, with a lease in place until December 30th of 2020.
But I am a purchaser.
With the agreement spelled out in the agreement as a lease payment.
They were waiting for paperwork from Deborah Wool on the UCC. She had to sign off on it before they could continue.
Yeah, she did.
And that, that's with the closing company between them and Janet Sotomayor.
Well, then I guess I'm going to warn you, there is nothing recorded on your agreement.
I'll check on that tomorrow. I'm, it was supposed to be recorded.
So I guess, I don't know what's the legal, how, how does this unfold?
The attorney, our attorneys have taken care of it. Everything's in order.
No, and I apologize. I'm kind of talking to the city attorney for, for a motion. What, where does that leave us?
Well, it sounds like there's still questions on that with at least one council member in for the motion. If you're not comfortable voting on it, you can continue to May 5th, and hopefully by then, the applicant can contact the other party, and it hopefully could be worked out, or even they can show up to explain what's going on. That's another possibility. And at that time, you can also present the map that maybe you, you sent to the alcohol board.
Yeah, well, the title company's here in AJ. You know, I can find out tomorrow what the status is. It was supposed to have been recorded. I talked to her a week or two ago.
So are you, are you willing to, or are you okay with a two-week continuance to find out that information?
Now, does that affect me, then, as far as...
Well, the way the liquor board, the way it works is the city has 60 days to make a recommendation from the date of your application. And I believe that was March 23rd, is that correct, Madam Clerk?
That's correct. She has it until May 22nd, so we could actually extend to May 5th, and if needed, you could also extend till the second meeting in May, and we would still make the required deadline for the liquor board.
So hopefully, within the next week or so, you could get this wrapped up and you'd come back.
So what exactly are you concerned with? How I purchase the property, or that, that I, I'm a purchaser, and I had, it's backed up by a lease until January? What is the problem here?
I'm confused on that, too. I don't think she's scamming anybody.
That's a question for Gail, I think. Gail has the concern.
What, what is it the concern about? I mean, exactly. Why are you concerned about how I purchase the property?
I'm not concerned how you purchased it. I'm concerned on how the application was filled out, that you are a purchaser, and right now, today at this minute, you have a triple-net lease.
It's a lease purchase.
You are a tenant until January of 2021. That's my question, and it's a technical question, but I understand that you're buying it, but you haven't bought it yet, because that part of your agreement does not begin until January of 2021. Currently, you have a lease, so you are a tenant. You're not the owner.
So then, wouldn't this whole patio situation fall on the owner?
Pardon me?
Wouldn't your whole patio situation that's now null and void fall, fall on the owner?
No, because it's a triple-net lease.
Okay.
Which means the tenant is responsible for all repairs. But because she doesn't want the patio anyway, you don't want the patio anyways, so the diagram has to be corrected. Or is it corrected, or is it re-submitted without that patio? Because the city needs to have something in our records that says that patio is not a part of this. You agreed not to use that. Am I right, Joel?
Yes.
Okay.
First of all, nobody ever told me that I had to have an eight-foot block fence on that east patio. Period. Nobody. Not the city, not the liquor board. What you are talking about here is 2007, when I put in an application for a smoking patio with a three-block, three-block-high fence with wrought iron, which is what is there today. Nobody ever said anything about a eight-foot block fence or six-foot block fence. It would do absolutely no good. Where the chain link fence is, the chain link fence runs north and south, in the middle of the building, in the back. North and south. There's nobody there.
Also, on, on this lease, building something completely new is not necessarily a repair, either. I mean, that's, that's new, or...
It's the main, it's the maintenance, because it talks about permits and everything. But ma'am, what I'm saying is, you don't want that anyways.
No, I really don't, but I don't want my liquor license held up. I don't want to have to come back here on May 5th, or May 22nd, or whatever. I don't know how long this, how long we're going to be closed. Right now, I'm closed. I close my doors. I'm not going to open them until either the mayor or the governor says it's okay to open them. I'm just not going to take the risk.
It's okay, but I don't have that authority, so...
Well, and, and because, you know, if you look at it one way, it's, you're not open anyways, so we have the time to correct this and to correct the diagram. And I understand what you're saying is you didn't have a problem. We've had a problem since then.
I shouldn't be punished for what somebody else has done.
We're trying to eliminate problems.
Mayor?
I think we did.
Jeff Struble?
Can I, another question for either Jennifer or Joel, I'm not sure. Because of everything that's going on, is the liquor board even meeting anytime soon?
Yes, they are. Seeing heads.
Do we know when?
They hold a meeting when needed.
And they're doing it by...
Do we have any idea when that is? I mean, if...
It's usually an independent review from a member of the board, unless they actually schedule a full meeting if the...
Well, if I may.
Good.
The process is, if it's a denial, then it goes to the liquor board. The liquor board then holds a hearing, and that's mandatory. If it's an approval, then I think it's administrative. So then they don't have, they don't have a meeting to, to meet on it. I think it's just a sign off.
Okay, so that, I mean, just, just so for everybody to understand, so if, if this were to be approved tonight with conditions, or whatever it would be, the motion would be, it would go to an administrative process within the liquor board staff and would approve it in a timely manner. They wouldn't have to wait for the liquor board to actually meet and vote on it, correct?
I believe that's correct.
Okay.
And, you know, after, after the city's done with it, there's, there's no control of what happens with the state, so...
I understand. I'm just, I'm just trying to get it out there as to how little control we have of the process after it leaves us. And so, and then if we, and we don't have any idea if that would take a week or two weeks after we get done with whatever we do. And if we wait, if we were to wait till May 5th, there again, we don't know if it would be approved on May, I don't know how long it takes. What, what is the timeframe that Jennifer has to get the paperwork to the liquor board after we take action on it?
I usually send something the very next day to the liquor board.
Okay.
Back to the, to the state.
So whatever, if we, if we decide it tonight or May 5th, it could be within two weeks, anyway, so, okay.
I'd like to remind you guys that you all approved that patio. You sent people out there from planning and zoning and whatever. You came out and you looked at it, and you approved it. Because I made the application here, I don't remember what day, what year it was, but, and then we very rarely used it. Now, it could have been used when I wasn't there. I haven't been there for four years.
Okay.
But we, we, I think we used it a couple times. We held, I don't know, I don't know, something during the summer. We had some dunk tanks and stuff there, but it's, other than that, it has not been used, and I have no plans to use it.
Yeah.
But it is an approved patio.
That was a good point you're making also. So we do have other business, so if no more questions, this is a, okay, I'm going to move on. This is a public hearing. Would anyone like to speak on this item? Hearing and seeing none, I'll close the public hearing and ask for a motion.
Well, before that, I just want to make sure I understand and make a statement here. I just want to make her understand. So the, the wall or parcel wall, it was a three-foot wall with the wrought iron that was proposed in 2007, was to basically delineate what the patio was going to be, was going to be surround, it was meant to surround the patio that's there. It wasn't meant, and it, a three-foot wall will not eliminate any kind of music or noise of any kind, even if somebody drops a glass or, and busts it, it's going to make noise and somebody's going to hear it somewhere. But I, I think the issue of what's, we, we do need to be covered on the drawing that that is being submitted, because if the drawing says that there's going to be east patio, at some point, I'm not saying it's going to happen, but at some point, it could be said, "Well, we have it approved, so we could do it." And if it's our intention and...
But we solved that problem.
Let me finish talking. And so, I understand people say things, and I, Ms. Nugent, I totally trust you, and I believe what you're saying, and I understand what you're saying and everything, but just to cover us, if there's any way that we could get an amended drawing submitted to the liquor board so that they would see what we would actually want to have in place when the liquor board license is approved? I'm removing the patio, that east patio.
So was that a question or just a comment?
That's what she said.
Well, I know, I know that's what she said, but the drawing that's being, that was submitted says there's a, and I just want to make sure that that drawing can be submitted. If we were to approve it tonight, that the drawing can be submitted with a, with an, so that the liquor board staff will see it.
I think she did say she would do that.
I just want to make sure the liquor board staff will see it when they are making their decision and everything.
Actually, you can't...
I can do that. I can send in an amended drawing.
All right, yeah, she, she...
I am giving up legally.
We, we already...
It's an approved patio that you all approved.
Okay, so, yeah, I think she committed to that earlier.
I understand. I'm just making a statement, and that's what I get allowed to do.
Okay, I am calling for a motion again.
Your Honor?
Yes.
I moved that the application for an owner transfer individual series liquor license for Superstition Sky Bar and Restaurant located at 945 East Phoenix Street be recommended for approval to the Arizona Department of Liquor Licenses and Control with one condition being that the diagram currently showing the east side patio is removed with a new diagram showing that there is no east side patio.
Second.
Roll call.
I have a motion by Councilmember Rizzi, and I believe a second by Vice Mayor Wilson?
Yes.
Okay, roll call. Vice Mayor Wilson?
Yes.
Councilmember Barker?
Yeah.
Councilmember Rizzi?
Yes.
Councilmember Schroder?
Yes.
Councilmember Struble?
Yes.
Councilmember Evans?
Yes.
Mayor Sertie?
Yes.
Unanimous approval, Your Honor. Motion passes.
Okay, consideration and application for a Series 10 Beer and Wine Store liquor license for Pyramid Smoke Shop and Mini Market. Jennifer, again.
Your Honor, thank you. Before counsel tonight is a new application for a Series 10 Beer and Wine Store liquor license. This is for the Pyramid Smoke Shop and Mini Market. The departments that have reported are the Police Department, Fire Department, Planning and Zoning, and the Buildings and Safety Department. All are recommending the council make a recommendation of approval. We have not received any comments in favor or against the application at this time.
Okay, I do not see the applicant here. Is there any discussion or questions from counsel? Is there any discussion or questions from council? Hearing and seeing none, I'll ask for a motion.
Your honor.
Robin.
I move that the application for a Series 10 Beer and Wine Store for Pyramid Smoke Shop and Mini Market located at 2130 West Apache Trail be recommended for approval to the Arizona Department of Liquor Licenses and Control.
Second.
I had Gail on the second. Roll call.
I have a motion by Councilmember Barker, a second by Councilmember Evans. Councilmember Schroder?
Yes.
Vice Mayor Wilson?
Yes.
Councilmember Barker?
Yes.
Councilmember Evans?
Yes.
Councilmember Rizzi?
Yes.
Councilmember Struble?
Yes.
Mayor Sertie?
Yes.
Unanimous, your honor, motion passes.
Presentation, discussion, public hearing, and consideration of proposed projects to be submitted under Resolution Number 20-08 for block grants. Heather.
Good evening, mayor, members of the council. This evening is the last step in our process, our public participation process for the fiscal year 2020 Community Development Block Grant and State Special Project Funding. Basically, we have had a public meeting back in February. We presented the information and discussed this process with the leadership team. And then, we are before you this evening for our last required public hearing. Application is due for the CDBG in August, and then, next year will be the State Special Project Funding. I apologize, but I am required to cover all of these items in my conversation this evening, so I will try and go as fast as I can. First of all, any CDBG project that is proposed must meet one of the three national objectives. The low to moderate income persons, address a slum and blight, or address an urgent need. And this is an old slide that says not applicable to Apache Junction, but one may argue that current situations could constitute an urgent need. Under the address slum and blight within a redevelopment area, just want to point out is that we did have two redevelopment areas. Old West Highway Redevelopment Area is a newer one. Apache Trail Redevelopment Area is the one in red, and Old West is the newest one in blue. Eligible projects, there's a whole lot of projects that we can do with CDBG funds. And this is just a few categories or options that we could choose from. On our website, we do have a comprehensive list of all of the projects we have done since the beginning of our time doing CDBG back in the eighties. Current funding right now, I see a typo, apologize for that. So, the fiscal 2020, we're expecting about $74,000. That application is due in August. And then, I apologize, on the right side, it should be fiscal 2020 SSP, due next summer. That is for up to $300,000. We do have a grievance procedure, which is listed on our website, that does talk about ways the public can make a complaint or address concerns about the process or projects that are selected. Through the public meeting that we had in February and the leadership team meeting, we had a few projects that have come up. We have been doing for several years now improvements to the Grand View Neighborhood. That is the neighborhood that is south of the trail, north of Broadway, on Grand, Acatio, Main, Pallaverty, and that area right there. So, we have been doing sidewalks, curb and gutter, and drainage improvements. We also are open up for any public service projects, so nonprofits can come and request some assistance. No nonprofit has requested any funding, but I do have in bold there, this is something that has sort of popped up. So, Rapid Rehousing is a program that, there was one agency in Penale County that provided housing for the homeless. They have since lost that funding, and starting in July, will not have funding to house the homeless. So, I threw that up there as an option for us to consider. Generally speaking, a nonprofit could assist us with this, or the city could develop its own program. Next is our Housing Rehabilitation, or our Emergency Repair Program. These are programs that we've been going, been doing for years. So, this is just some additional funding for that. We generally receive funding under a different pot of money for the Housing Rehab Program. And so, with that, we, see if any, the public, I don't know how we do this, has any comments or projects.
This is a public hearing. Would anyone like to speak on this item? Hearing and seeing none, I'll close the public hearing. And is there any discussion among council? Then I will ask for a motion.
Your honor.
Yes, Chip.
I move that proposed projects submitted under Resolution Number 20-08 authorizing the submission of city fiscal year 2020 Community Development Block Grant Regional Account in Fiscal Year 2020 State Special Project Applications be approved.
Second.
Second.
Second by Gail.
We do need to have a project identified.
That was a gullible.
Okay, we need, we need to identify one.
So, withdraw the motion.
In, mayor, if I may, in the motions that council has, we have not identified the projects. One of the projects that I was unaware of was the Rapid Rehousing Program. So, if council can select which one under CDBG?
Is everyone hearing that on the...
And SSP both.
Is everyone hearing that on the phones? Get, you're kind of quiet if you might. Get a little more bold, Jennifer.
So...
We have to pick a project?
There are projects, two projects under the CDBG grants. One is for the Grand View Neighborhood Improvements. The other is for Rapid Rehousing Program. You must choose one of those two. And then, also, correct? Also, under the SSP, you have, you actually have to select the Grand View Neighborhood Improvements.
I don't have those.
So, we need a, we need a complete new motion then, right?
So, if, if the vice mayor could retract his motion, and the person who seconded it, that'd be nice.
Okay, I'll retract my motion.
And who seconded it?
I did, Gail.
Do you retract it?
Yes.
Okay, now you can start over.
No.
No.
So, one of the motions would be either to approve the 2020 CDBG Rapid Rehousing Program, or the other motion would be to adopt the 2020 CDBG Grand View Neighborhood Improvement Grant.
Rapid rehousing, you called it?
Go ahead and re-explain.
Yes, okay, so the rapid rehousing, that is a completely new program, completely last-minute, sort of thrown in here as a conversation, because within the last couple of weeks, the only, the single agency in Penale County who was receiving funding for this, to house the homeless, has lost that funding. So, this is just an idea put out there that we can provide funding to get the homeless housed in apartments or in a home, and help get them housed and pay their rent, and then, get them services.
Your honor.
Yes.
I have some questions, Heather. We haven't had the opportunity to really go over that rapid rehousing. Like, who would be in control of the grant? Who would do all of the research, et cetera, required for rehousing, et cetera, et cetera, et cetera? I think it's a little late in the game to come up with this.
Mr. Mayor, if I may. Heather, can I ask you, what are your deadlines for the motions? And when does this have to be submitted, once the vote is taken?
The application is due August 1st. However, a letter of intent is due to the state by the end of this month. So, and I acknowledge that the rapid rehousing was a very last-minute thing. And to address who would do it, we could seek assistance and sign an agreement with a nonprofit to do that for us, and we have the time to do that. Or, we could seek to create that program internally and do it ourselves. Both, we would have the time from now until August 1st to do that.
I think it's something that we should work on.
Yeah, I like that.
I'm with Robin. I'm with Robin. I just, I feel like it's just so last-minute. We've, this is the first we've really heard about it, and I would like to explore it more. And I just, I agree with Robin. I just feel it's so last-minute and not enough information.
Your honor.
Yes.
It seems to me that we've spent a great deal of time on the neighborhood that we're rehabbing, and that if we can continue that at this point, and work on this type of rehoming, or other types of things next time around, because we've stuck on this Grand View Neighborhood forever. I'm ready to get out of it after this round. So, I would propose that we do some exploring on this particular thing that Heather's talking about, and talk about it in depth next year.
Okay, so, are we going to have a motion tonight? Are we going to look at these for...
Sure. Your honor.
Yes.
I move that the proposed projects submitted under Resolution Number 2008, that being specifically the Grand View Neighborhood Rehab for the Development Block Grant, as well as the SSP applications be approved. Second.
Jennifer, are you happy with that motion?
I'm very happy with the motion, your honor.
Thank you, Jennifer.
Let's have a roll call.
I have Councilmember Barker who made the motion, Councilmember Evans who seconded the motion. Roll call, Councilmember Barker.
Yes.
Councilmember Struble?
Yes.
Councilmember Evans?
Yes.
Councilmember Rizzi?
Yes.
Councilmember Schroder?
Yes.
Vice Mayor Wilson?
Yes.
Mayor Sertie?
Yes.
Unanimous, your honor.
Okay, presentation, discussion, and consideration of proposed Resolution 20-07 authorizing submission of application for Governor's Office Highway Safety. Heather, again.
Yes, thank you, mayor, members of the council. This is a standard resolution that authorizes us to submit an application, and then, if awarded, execute any agreements to accept the funding. The turnaround time from the Governor's Office of Highway Safety releasing the notice of funding availability and its application due date does not allow us to get a resolution done in that timeframe. So, it's always done retroactive, and the Governor's Office is always fine with that. So, this actually has gone a little bit longer than normal because of our current situation. But it is simply stating that we submitted four different applications, equalling $174,521. First one is for some overtime to do, to complete DUI work, and as well as purchase some portable breath tests, breathalyzer tests. The second is to purchase a vehicle. Third is purchase a motorcycle. And then, fourth is to do speed enforcement, and getting some radars and e-ticket machines to help with that work.
Any discussion or questions? Then I will ask for a motion.
Your honor, I'll try again.
Chip, you had it first.
Okay, I move that Resolution Number 20-07 authorizing the submission of applications to the Governor's Office of Highway Safety, federal fiscal year 2021, grant program be approved.
Second.
Seconded by Gail.
All right, motion by Vice Mayor Wilson, second by Councilmember Evans. Councilmember Schroder?
Yes.
Councilmember Barker?
Yes.
Councilmember Evans?
Yes.
Councilmember Struble?
Yes.
Vice Mayor Wilson?
Yes.
Councilmember Rizzi?
Yes.
Mayor Sertie?
Yes.
Thank you. Motion passes, your honor.
Thank you, Heather. Presentation, discussion, and consideration of proposed resolution, no, I just did that. Council direction to staff on proceeding with an application for nomination for City of AJ to be an international dark sky community. And we have Kelsey. All right, I'm looking for it here.
Okay.
Kelsey's wearing a black top and her neck, her identification bag.
I know. Representing dark skies.
Hair back in a ponytail.
Well, good evening, mayor and fellow city council members. My name is Kelsey Shatnick. I'm a planner on staff. Before I begin my presentation, I want to apologize that this wasn't originally attached to the agenda, the presentation. But it is in Legistar, and I believe it was emailed to each council member as well. And tonight's presentation is seeking direction to staff on a, to proceed with the application to designate Apache Junction as a dark sky community. So, what is an international dark sky community? Well, it's a town, city, municipality, or other legally organized community that has shown exceptional dedication to the preservation of night skies through implementation and enforcement of equality, outdoor lighting, ordinance, dark sky education, and citizen support of dark skies. And in order to be eligible for designation as a community, it has to be some type of legal organization, such as a city or a town. So, since we are seeking designation for the City of Apache Junction, it makes sense to go forward with a community designation. This is an example of all of the cities within Arizona that have already been certified as an international dark sky community. You have Flagstaff and Sedona, which people probably suspect. But there's also Fountain Hills, Cottonwood, Camp Verde, and the Village of Oak Creek. And we can kind of look to these cities as examples as we move forward in this process.
Could I interrupt?
Mm-hmm.
Robert was mentioning that this would make us the largest city in the world with this. Are we larger than Flagstaff?
No.
So, I don't know what that stat was.
That was, yeah, that was a piece of information, somebody. I've been getting email after email of people interested. And one gentleman in his email suggested that that would be the case. So, I was kind of inquiring, as opposed to saying.
Robert's wearing a powder blue shirt and a teal tie today, for those at home. Okay, back to your presentation.
All right, so, this is a basic overview of the application process. You would start off by submitting an international dark sky community inquiry, which basically is just providing information about the city, and saying that you have an interest in applying for a designation. The next is to update the zoning code to meet the minimum requirements. All dark sky communities have to meet certain requirements. So, updating our current outdoor lighting ordinance to meet those standards would be a large part of this process. Then, you would designate a point of contact. This would either be a committee member or a staff member to kind of go back and forth with IDA staff. Obtain a letter of nomination from a qualified International Dark Sky Association member. I believe the City of Fountain Hills, the city manager, has expressed interest in providing a letter. If not, just, it has to come from somebody who has already received certification as a dark sky community. And then, the final would be sending in the application to IDA staff. And throughout the whole process, you work really closely with their staff to fill out a proper application, and make sure that we would have everything we would need in order to move forward. So, this is a graphic that kind of breaks the application process into three phases. The first phase is to, is basically expressing interest in the program, and determining what designation you would be seeking. The second phase is the formal application phase, which you put together that vacation and work closely with IDA staff in order to meet all of the requirements. This process can take one to three years, depending on how much work needs to be done, or what we as a community decide to do for the application. or what we as a community decide to do for the application. And then the third phase is certification. So, once the application has been essentially approved to move forward, to go in front of the IDA Board of Directors, they review it and then can either approve or deny it and provide comments if it's been denied to reapply for a designation. So, that's kind of the, my presentation. I know it was fairly short, but it's just providing an overview of how this whole process works, and I'm happy to answer any questions.
Your Honor?
Yes.
So, I do have, I have two questions. One, one is how, we've talked about how Apache Junction kind of already is somewhat a dark skies community. So, the first question is how would this be different? What things would, how, what would change from what we are currently doing to what we would be doing? And the second question is the, in education part of, piece, who does the education part with the community to educate them on what this means and what needs to be done to acquire this certification?
In terms of what would change, basically, it would be tightening up our outdoor lighting regulations. It's fairly strict as it is in terms of complying with dark skies, but there are a few regulations that would need to be changed in order to meet the basic guidelines that all dark sky communities would have to meet. And in terms of education, I kind of went through some of the Arizona applications, and it, it seems to vary. There are a lot of committees that kind of control the application process and kind of help the, the city or whomever go forward. And the education can be in the form of going to a school and maybe giving a presentation or something to that effect.
And should we talk about those changes? You said there would be some changes that.
Your Honor, I would just like to clarify where we're at on the process, if I can. So, we have an ordinance that requires us to receive council direction to staff. This is not a staff-led project. This is a council-led project. And at this point in the process, we are seeking direction from staff, whether or not to answer some of those questions.
We're not gonna hash it out tonight.
That is correct. And so, we, we, we talked about it in the work session, and I think it's great to have, I think Council, Vice Mayor Wilson has some question. I think it's great to start having some questions, but I think we're in earnest tonight trying to seek understanding on the, what council's will to move forward, whether to spend staff's time and more energy on it as a, as ordinance or not.
Yeah, some of my questions would be, just because they recommend it, could we change it any, you know? And I'd be interested in, Flagstaff obviously has a stadium. They don't have a dome stadium, do they?
What's that?
Flagstaff doesn't have, NAU doesn't have a dome stadium, do they?
Yes, they do.
Do they?
Yeah.
Okay, so that's, that's why it would be no light there then.
Oh, they have high school builds.
High school, yeah.
Yeah.
But, yeah, there would be a lot of questions which we could hash out later, no doubt. I also want to throw out there, I don't know if everybody knew that we got contacted by a, a leadership group in the Gold Canyon area, and they are backing this 100% because what Apache Junction does, we're out here on the edge, and all of the people with the homes up in the foothills and Gold Canyon and Peralta, we would be affecting them too. So, by, you know, initiating something like this, we'd be protecting the whole area's views and lifestyle. Robert, I know you made a special trip in tonight to, to steward this, so what would you like to add?
So, as far as, I mean, we, we know the criteria that we have to meet. I mean, have we toiled around with what we already have in place? I mean, are we in the same ballpark here? Are we, are we looking at something that's gonna put us back quite a, quite a while to get, to try to get up to the speed with these, with these criterias?
Um, I've been reviewing the outdoor lighting standards that are currently in place, and we're, I think we're at a good place. There are some areas that we need to tighten to get to the basic standards that are required, but I think we're in pretty good shape right now.
It would be new development, though, like the Burger King sign wouldn't have to come down.
Right, it primarily changing that would affect new development as it would come in. And then, as lighting that doesn't meet the standard, as it ages or it breaks and then is replaced, it would, the new lighting would have to meet that standard. And then I believe for communities, their, their hope is that any lighting that is owned by the city, that there would be some basic plan in place that over five years after the new ordinances adapted that.
So, with, as far as, I mean, there, there, there is exceptions, correct? Like, the mayor was, like, the football, our high school football stadium. I mean, they, they know you need lighting on there, they know for safety. So, these are the kind of things that aren't necessarily involved with the criteria?
Yeah, and they, they call that out within the guidelines. Basically, with a lot of outdoor stadiums or, you know, football fields, it's making sure that the lights are off by, you know, 10:30 or that they're on a timer, so they're not forgotten. So, they, there are different standards for different types of lighting, yes.
One, one of the things on, on this for me is, you know, what is the, the changes that need to be done, you know, in this part? And also, for the city as well as for the private homeowner that has lighting right now, what is the timeframe that they would have to go through to meet? And what is this cost involved? And I think, you know, we, you know, I, I don't have a problem investigating and looking into it and stepping forward, but one of the things I think we need to look at is what's these costs gonna be, what we have to do, and then make that decision whether or not to put the application in or not.
I agree.
Yes.
I, I had one other thing to, to complement Vice Mayor Wilson's comments is that would it also entail any kind of code enforcement on private property? Just something to think about. So, these are things that we're gonna want to know as we dig in.
Sounds like there would be a lot of grandfathering, though, correct?
How long is grandfathering gonna be good? We have currently have some land lights that are grandfathered in and are working just fine. How long is that good?
Until they become great-grandfathered in.
I think with private residences, there's, there's no timeframe, at least that I can see within the guidelines, that we would have to put in our ordinance that they would have to meet. It's just basically if it's damaged enough that it needs to be replaced, then that's kind of when that would kick in. And that's kind of what our current outdoor lighting regulations, regulations already have in them, so.
So, we're already meeting?
We're, we're already doing that, yes. I believe it's, if it's damaged or something about 50% of it, the cost of it, it has to be replaced and meet the current.
And I believe that the county also has this too. So, we would just be, you know, pushing it out as well, so.
Your Honor?
Yes.
Um, I, I, I agree with the Vice Mayor, and in looking at the motion, the motion is to direct staff to proceed with an application, whereas I'm gathering from the mayor that he would like to have some of these questions asked and answered before.
Yes.
That application gets done. Is that correct, Vice Mayor?
Yes.
Okay.
So.
And I, and I agree with that. I have a lot of questions that I, before I commit to, to turning in an application, I, I would like the answers to those questions. So, I, I would prefer to direct staff to research what our responsibilities as far as, as lights are concerned, costs involved, et cetera. I, I would feel far more comfortable about submitting an application if I had those answers.
So, do we need to word the motion carefully?
Yeah, so, my, my, my recommendation would be just to word the motion, in that way, council member or vice mayor, so that we know what type of investment you want staff to make on, on this project.
Okay. Any more discussion? Okay, we're cutting into Bryant's birthday party time, so.
Yeah, that's done.
I'll ask for a motion on this.
Did he bring cake?
It's okay.
Your Honor?
Yes.
I move that council's direct staff to investigate and get, come back to the council with the, the changes that would need to be made and the cost involved for the city and the private citizens on meeting the international dark sky community.
Second.
You got that, Jennifer, second. Roll call.
I have a motion by Vice Mayor Wilson and a second by Councilmember Barker. Councilmember Rizzi?
Yes.
Councilmember Evans?
Yes.
Vice Mayor Wilson?
Yes.
Councilmember Barker?
Yes.
Councilmember Struble?
Yes.
Councilmember Schroder?
Yes.
Mayor Sertie?
Yes.
Unanimous, Your Honor?
We have a motion on the next meeting dates.
Your Honor?
Robin was first.
Okay, I move that an executive session at 6:00 PM and a work session at 7:00 PM for Monday, May 4th, 2020, and executive session at 6:00 PM and a work session at 7:00 PM for Tuesday, Cinco de Mayo, 2020. He held in the City Council Conference Room in the City Council Chambers located at 300 East Supersonics Boulevard, Apache Junction, Arizona, respectively, and other meetings if necessary. Second.
Roll call.
I have a motion by Councilmember Barker and a second by Councilmember Evans. Councilmember Evans?
Yes.
Councilmember Rizzi?
Yes.
Councilmember Struble?
Yes.
Vice Mayor Wilson?
Yes.
Councilmember Barker?
Yes.
Councilmember Schroder?
Yes.
Mayor Sertie?
Yes.
Unanimous, Your Honor?
Okay, we have no call to the public, so I think that is everything, so we'll be adjourned.
I think we're wrong for Bryant's birthday.
Oh, yeah. Happy birthday, Brian.